We'll call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Regular Town Council Meeting to Water for Tuesday, March 6, 2018, at 7:06 PM. First start first with salute to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Judy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Pandoora.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Flaner. Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Rose.
Here.
Councilor Bigleom.
Here.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Here.
A motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting for February 20th, 2018, Town Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections?
There's a correction on page four of the minutes in the second paragraph, giving credit to the town clerk's office where it should have been the town planner's office.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bigleom.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda Correspondence from Citizens' Statements and Petitions Under Correspondence by the Water Pollution Control. There's nothing listed. Unfinished business, there's nothing listed. New business, nothing listed. Citizen's Statements and Petitions Under Water Pollution Control Authority. Seeing we'll move into Regular Town Council Meeting. Reports of Boards, Committees, Boards and Commissions, Economic Development Commission.
They met last night. I was unable to attend, but I do know they are still looking for a liaison, so certainly looking for volunteers.
I will see when I can come. Right now, I don't know if I, because your meetings are at 6 o'clock, which is a little tight for me, but I will see once how many of them I can make right now, just because I have multiple things I'm doing. Mondays are tough, but I will. It's the first Monday of the month? Or do you meet quarterly?
No, they're meeting monthly, and yeah, it's the first Monday of the month.
Okay. 6 o'clock?
Six.
All right.
Next is Park and Rec.
Park and Rec met last week for their monthly meeting. There is an Eagle Scout project that is a bocce court that is going to be going in next to the tennis courts. The Eagle Scout, I believe, has talked to Franny about where it's going. I saw some flags laid out there, but I mean, did they check with you as far as?
Laura reached out, but I didn't.
Okay. So there's one bocce court going in now, and hopefully there will be another Eagle project coming up where they can put a second bocce court in, and there is room. If you're looking at the tennis courts, to the left of the tennis courts is where they're going. Also, North Branford Little League is donating, they're making quite the donation to Coulter Field, Coulter and Memorial Field. They are donating a scoreboard for Coulter Field, which they have already talked to Franny and got the specs and know exactly what the requirements are. A batting cage, portable mounds, and a bullpen with pitching lanes. And so, North Branford Little League is really embracing what we have done down in that area, and they are donating. There, a lot of this stuff has already been ordered. It's been approved by the Park and Rec Department to enhance that field area there also. And they also went over all of their guidelines for rentals, and they took out, they, we can no lo, they are no longer going to issue camping permits for Totucket Valley Park. Not that it's been a big buy, but it's, there's really no one to police the camping when people, if they did take up. So they have eliminated issuing camping permits on there, and that's it.
Next, Police Commission.
Police Commission meets next Monday, the 12th.
Fire Commission.
Fire Commission, the chief, chief talked about the work being done on Route 22 by the Regional Order Authority, and I believe he said they had like three months of work left. Now, they're working, they're working 24/5 during the week, and they may change to 24/7 to get this done. Everything looks like it's going great over there. Fire Department is, they're ready in case anything happens. The next thing was, they discussed about the work that was done on the ambulance, on both ambulances. I think they're both complete. I think the work is finished on both of them. The chief's not here tonight. Anthony, is that, both of them are finished?
You are correct.
Okay. So that's, that's great. That's all done. They spoke something about the equipment that was, that was given to them by the North Branford Police or Fire, and it was, I guess.
North Haven.
North Haven. And, and I guess some of it was used by the Police Department, some was used by the, by the Fire Department. I guess it's worth quite a bit of money, too, so it was, it was a great deal from North Haven. And the next, next meeting is scheduled for April 12th. That's about it.
Good. Thank you. Next is Board of Education and Town Communications Subcommittee.
There was no meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
Meeting on the 27th, we're meeting with Franny to start talking about five-year plan.
Thank you. Public Safety Communications Committee.
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission.
So I got there late. Didn't got a working time. So when I got there, they were talking about, there was a public hearing on what can and cannot be done on a farm in residential zone. That one's gonna have a lot of discussion about it. But before that, George, I don't, did you pay attention, or did you think you were free from having to pay attention anymore?
No, I paid attention.
Good. Would you like to help us out?
There's nothing more to add. We have a second public hearing, and it's being continued as well, and that'll.
What was that about, George?
That, that was about the Mr. Newbig's.
Oh, the dog kennel.
Dog.
Okay.
Kennels on the, on his farm.
On his horse farm.
And that's, that's going to be continued, so you're right, there'll probably be a lot more discussion next time.
Next is East Shore Health District. Move into the Town Manager's Report. Bond Refunding Opportunity.
Yes, you'll have in your packet a memo prepared by Anthony Esposito about a potential refunding opportunity. Wanted to give you this information ahead of the March 20th meeting. We're gonna prepare to move forward on this to realize some savings in, in bond refunding. So that is just an FYI for your information, and certainly if you have any questions prior to us putting that together, but it appears that we could hit, hit the market and hopefully do well in terms of getting these bonds refunded. It's the small window of opportunity. I don't believe we have anything beyond that that we can, can refund, but this is one opportunity.
Are there costs associated with that?
Yeah, there certainly are, and.
In your, in your backlog packet, there's roughly about, I think it's, there's cost of issuance, it's not in here, you'll have the next time. There's costs obviously for the bond council, there's costs for the financial advisor, there's costs for the underwriter, and the, still the savings net of those costs is about $550,000 to the town. The full, the full motion will be in your next packet. This would just kind of just advise you that we're looking at it.
The memo says the, roughly in the $50,000 range.
For next year?
Yeah.
Right. Based on the $550 illustration that we were, we've given three different illustrations, three different, underwriters are bidding on it, basically. So we'll come back with recommendation at the next meeting, and the total savings over the remaining lifespan is $550,000 roughly. About $50,000 will fall into next year's budget. However, I don't have a number, firm number yet, so I can't alter next year's budget and reflect the savings in 1819 because it's not concrete yet until we do this deal, probably in May, it'll be after the fact.
Okay. So the, it could be that the costs of doing this and the savings in the first year might be a wash?
Well, the $550,000 is net of all, all your costs.
Oh, it's net of, okay.
Net of all the costs.
That's, that's your projection?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And how many years are left?
10.
Okay.
It's actually the 2008 bonds that we refinanced once in 2010, refinancing again now to another lower rate.
Okay.
And still achieving savings. 2008, you may recall, was the portion of MBIS, a portion of the library expansion, and some miscellaneous roadwork.
Anthony, so when you hand that in at the next meeting, can we, can you give us a layman's term spreadsheet?
Sure.
And don't they add years when they do this, too?
Sometimes they do.
Yeah, so, so we just need to, we need to see all of it in black and white so we can understand it.
Certainly.
And, and actually understand the savings.
Next is Request for Construction Work Requirement, Police Department.
Yes, I just have a short memo for you indicate that I am working on this, otherwise known as the open manhole cover ordinance, that I'm going to go back to the Police Commission to make sure that we, I understand what they're looking at and take a look at some draft language, get their recommendation as likely, it's more than likely that it's going to be folded in under a current ordinance, so we'd have to come back to the Town Council and then for your review, and, and obviously the procedure and process we have if we want, if the council wants to amend the ordinance to take up a recommendation of new language. So I'm gonna go back to their meeting, meet with them, and then bring it back, would hope for the March 20th or April meeting.
Thank you. Next is Discussion on Energy Conservation with Mark Demming.
Yeah, I think that this came up at the last meeting, and Council, I think, was in agreement that I would take a meeting and, and reach out to this individual, which I did. Sat down and, and had a, a good conversation. I submitted some information that he, he provided for the project in Trumbull. I think there's a, is an opportunity to meet with him on the 20th if the Council is comfortable and, and ready to proceed. We could have him in for the 20th, and certainly I would take any other further questions you may have, but it sounds like in his experience, there's a shorter window in which municipalities could potentially look at getting savings within a 10-year period from the experience he's had in other municipalities, other boards of educations, and so forth. So I think it would be, I think it would be helpful to hear directly from him in terms of how the, the process, the mechanics, actual nuts and bolts work, and maybe take, take the council through the step-by-step process and what would be different than going out to one of the narescos and, and that whole process we were looking at with ECG. So, you know, it, I think it has merit for further review, for sure. So I'd be happy, he is available, and I can certainly.
Did, he asked you for a release? I think he needed a release to get some utility bills?
Yeah, we can cer, yeah, that's part of what, what, I mean, I don't think he needs a release. We certainly, we can sit down with him to go at any point.
Well, he was looking, I think he was looking for two years' worth of utility bills.
Sure.
He figured it'd be easier to get through the utility company than to pull them all out of town more, unless it's computerized here.
It's, we maintain a software, if just by UI, will that's more of it.
Okay.
Maximize total costs in a spreadsheet format if you can print it off.
Oh, that'd be perfect.
Yeah.
Then you could contact him and tell him we have it.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
And if there's anything else that the coun, the council, you know, please forward me an email for me, whatever you're looking for in preparation, otherwise I will proceed. If there's no objection, I'll proceed with putting him on the agenda and, you know, having a sort of Q and A with him.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is Community Events and Presentations. Seeing we have Citizens' Statements and Petitions. We had a letter from Susan Traversi regarding welcoming signs.
Yeah, I put that in there just to let you know. I, I did have a conversation with her and, and wanted to put, put that in there. I let her know that the council is obviously working on this item in terms of, of signs, and she was relieved to hear that and very happy, but also, I just thought it was nice the way she opened the letter, that the council, you know, should know that people do take notice, that they are, council's done a great job in terms of paving the roads, stoplights, cross signs, tree trimming, basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball courts. It's not going unnoticed, so I thought that was a nice, nice letter, and she's very happy to see that we're moving forward. You know, somewhat disappointed it's not going to be an electric sign or a neon sign, but she understands our budget and that we're working on it.
Thank you. Next is, item is Resignations and Appointments. First is Reappointment of Jack Crasco to the Permanent Project Building Committee, Building Commission, term to expire 11/30/2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Pat.
Thank you. Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bigleom.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next item is Reappointment of Steve Scavo to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 5/31/2020.
So moved, and I'd just like to note that he is currently on that commission as an alternate, so he's just being reappointed as an alternate.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bigleom.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
All right, next is Reappointment of Tom Scavo to the Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire 12/31/2019.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Pandoora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bigleom.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is Reappointment of Donna Cardon, Cardon, to the Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire 12/31/2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Pandoora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bigleom.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is Reappointment of Mary Biglo to the Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire 12/31/2019.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Pandoora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bigleom.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is Reappointment of Peter Deo to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate member, term to expire 12/31/2020.
So moved.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Pandoora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bigleom.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is, we're moving into unfinished business, discussion and action.
Before we start that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make two motions to amend the agenda. The first one, it would be item 13D, a bid award for bid number 11-2017/18 vehicles for Public Works.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Pandoora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bigleom.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
And my second motion would be, I guess, item 14A, and it's to make a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session item to discuss the harassment complaint filed by Officer Sheen.
So, pause second.
Need a second. All right. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Pandoora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Bigleom.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, first item is approval of proposed ordinance 2017-1, Chapter 40, entitled Fire Department Fees, that's tabled until July. Next is Review of Public Hearing Status of 1599 Foxen Road. Next is Future Budget Planning Initiative.
Yeah, regarding, that's on our budget, should we have like a discussion maybe of what we're expecting, or direction we're looking for the Town Manager to seek, or does anybody have any thoughts on the budget?
In adding to that discussion, I would like to give the Town Attorney some work to do, and have him tell us legally what we can take out of the Board of Ed budget and control. You know, I know at one point you had made a comment about things that didn't have to do with education, the town could control, and, not saying this Board of Ed or our own Board of Ed, but Board of Eds typically hide money in some of the infrastructure stuff, and, and we don't hide any money. So if there are things that we can legally take over, I think that we should.
Mark, Mark Demming said the big thing for the town to take over is, is utilities, electric, heating, fuel, gas, while that.
But I mean, maybe we can look at the.
That should be in the town's budget.
Look at their budget and see, you know, what items could the town, maybe the town doesn't want to take them over, but at least if we knew what we could take over.
And just a, the short answer, and I can give you a short answer only because I was asked by another municipality representative to look at this issue as well, and the short answer is that you are obligated to fund the minimum education requirements of the, of your school system. Generally, where, areas where you can focus in on is at the administrative level. So if there, if there are specific administrative positions that are not critical to the education of the students, so therefore would be outside of that minimum education required to educate your students, then you can talk about budgetary cuts. But if it's related to the minimum that is required to educate, again, the, the state starts at a minimum threshold, doesn't say you have to have the Rolls Royce of school districts, but you have to at least have the minimum that the state requires, and that's what you're obligated to fund.
Okay, I get that, but I'm asking what can we put on our budget, like, like city utilities?
Well, again, I'd have to, I would have to look at the budget at large, or you'd have to point me to a specific, if you're looking at budgetary cuts or budgetary savings, to say you're gonna take on utility, what you're really doing is shifting from the school budget to the town budget.
Right, we're still funding it.
You're still paying it. So that's not, that's not a savings per se, it's a savings on the Board of Ed side, because now it's not in their budget. So it looks like their budget is going down, but your taxpayers are still funding the same amount of money.
But can we do that, I guess, is else.
Yeah. If you wanted to take out of the board side and put on the town side, something like a utility cost, or copier charges, you know, if they have copiers and you're like, we want to consolidate with the town, copiers, yes, you can do that, stuff like that. But you, but let, just be intellectually honest that that's not a budget savings.
Correct.
Right? If, if your exercise is doing budgetary savings, that's just a reassignment, a reallocation from one line item to another.
Has the statute changed? I thought you had to give the Board of Ed, you couldn't give them less than they had the year before.
You're.
I think it changed last year, but the state level, based on the number of students, you can go down, you know.
Yeah, I am, I am relying on a Connecticut Supreme Court decision that came out of, actually it was a decision between the Board of Ed from the town of Norbituck and the, and the town, the Board of Finance was contesting the obligation to fund the, the district. And what the Connecticut Supreme Court stated is that the state minimum budget requirements must be funded. So that is, that is what your obligation is. Generally speaking, from the board's, the district's side, what they did, what you funded last year is what their minimum requirement is to educate your children. That's what their response is gonna be.
Right, but I believe the state changed the law last year.
They did, because Vinnie Pandoora came in.
And, because our state rep told us that, that now you can go below last year multiplied by the minimum student expenditure or something like that.
And that's why I'm defaulting to a 2004 Connecticut Supreme Court decision, which could.
Wouldn't that overrule? So would a new law, a 2016 law supersede that?
Well, the, but the, the Supreme Court did not say you have to fund last year's budget. It said you have to fund the state minimum required.
Oh, and the minimum is based on the number of students.
The minimum is based on whatever the district requires at a minimal level to educate the children. So it's not necessarily student population, it might be if the state Board of Ed passed a specific curriculum that says all students must be educated according to this curriculum, then that's the state minimum required. You know, so it's not necessarily driven by student population.
At, at our last meeting, I understood the Town Attorney was gonna contact the Board's Attorney.
We're working, we're, we're working on connecting. I was out of the office on Thursday and Friday of last week, and we have not yet actually had verbal, live communication. Thank you for that.
So, so then we don't have to give them what we gave them last year?
Yeah, right, but again, I, without looking at the budget, basically if you want to go through an analysis, a line item analysis of last year's education budget, you have to keep in your head the concept of being required to fund the state minimum requirement. What that is, by way of definition, is an ambiguous phrase, so we would then have to look at what is the state setting as the minimum requirement?
Okay.
You know, and so we'd have to look to the State Board of Ed for that, and then compare that against their budget.
Okay.
And then you have to have the philosophical conversation of, do you want to provide And then you have to have the philosophical conversation of, do you want to provide the state minimum requirement? Or do you want to provide something beyond that because of your, it's your town and they're your children?
I wasn't sure if there were any, like, resources we could look at sharing, you know, piggybacking to save, you know, money, whether it's IT or, you know, different areas, like what ideas maybe you had or-
Yeah, IT is one, I, I think there is possibility, maybe not for this cycle, but the next cycle with Grantford and potentially even in public works long-term. Again, other, other items, services may pop up, but those are the only two that I'm, you know, aware of that has potential to do some sort of regional or cautionary. Not, you know, either, and there's probably more on the, on the Board of Ed side potentially, but you just have to explore that, and I think those are longer term, term plays.
And next is review of ethics ordinance.
Yeah, thank you for providing what is in our agenda here. I am still in the process of going through it, I don't know if anyone, I know Marie has been going through it also. I think, I noticed there was a section in the Newtown about the public, how you relate to the public. I could see where you could take that section and maybe rewrite some of it to include within the, it was the Newtown, I can't remember the, what number it was, but I know it was dealing with the public. That was the only, I did, I read through all of them. That was the only one where I saw that maybe you could take that section and revise it, work it out a little bit, and it could be public and the Board of Commissioners, so.
And just, just to that point, what I, what I would say is, if you look there, and, and having represented the Trumbull Ethics, which was a very active ethics, ethics commission, I think the, probably the most active in the state, quite frankly, because I think we had like five complaints a year, which normally you get one every decade, but they use in their code, the use of the word decorum, meaning that you, officials shall behave with a decorum becoming of the office as a way of saying, you know, I didn't like what you said at the meeting, I'm going to, that's an ethics violation. You know, I thought that that was, you know, kind of misused a lot, but the use of the kind of word decorum was a behavioral thing that they used to try to, I don't want to use the word control, but to try to keep people's conduct in check.
That's, that's in the Trumbull document that you sent us?
Yeah, in fact, I didn't see that.
I didn't see that either, I saw, the only place I really saw anything relative to what Rose is talking about was in the Newtown.
No, I saw it all, I saw in the Trumbull a similar one to the Newtown, where they talk about conducting themselves with propriety.
Oh, I saw that.
Courteous and tact, but tho- those are not, those are very loose words, really, and, you know, none of it is really focused on what I understood Deputy Mayor Angeloni was objecting to.
It was my understanding was more public, behavior of officials in a public meeting or in a session or in a hearing, and what I can say is, when I looked across eight, not only the towns that I represent, but beyond, there, no one had something that was specific to a code of conduct. So then I just looked to, in my experience based on towns that I represented, and Trumbull, quite frankly, is the only ethics commission, I've represented town of Orange now fourteen years, we've never had an ethics complaint in fourteen years. Newtown, I've not been involved with any ethics complaints that have ever been filed. The town of Trumbull, I was town attorney there for four or five years, and I think we had about six ethics complaints. So I'm saying it's, it was a very active locale for ethics complaints. And there was a, a kind of a catchphrase in there, sir, I believe, that you kind of focused in on, I used the word decorum, but it was more the area that you focused on where someone, for example, someone had stood up at a meeting and basically called someone a liar. And they missed, they were mischaracterizing what the person was doing, the person who was called a liar felt offended by how they were treated and actually filed an ethics complaint under that section that you referred to, saying that they did not behave with the appropriate decorum, and the Ethics Commission should basically call, call them out on it. So, you know, you can be specific-
Well, they use the word propriety, and propriety doesn't mean decorum, it means conventional standards of behavior. And that's a rabbit's hole to go down.
That's what I was going to, that's what, why, again, I think that's why Trumbull has a very active ethics commission, and you have to decide as a body, if you're going to modify your code of ethics, where you want to go. You can go wherever you so choose as a body, but with modification comes consequences, intended consequences and unintended consequences. So you need to, I think you need to vet that before you act on it.
What you're talking about really is clodish behavior. And, you know, you can shrug your shoulders and say it's clodish behavior and, you know, that's on the person, and shame on them. I mean, to, to go after something like this strikes me as being exceedingly difficult, and frankly, I don't think it's got any rewards. It'd be a lot of, a lot of effort for for, for no good reason, I think.
All right, we'll just keep it on the agenda until I can review all of this, and then anyone else who wants to.
Well, that particular one talks about the public, I think you could change that, the terminology.
Twenty seven point four?
Yes.
Yes, that's right, okay.
All right, moving on, review of Board of Education rules of procedures and policy.
I think we're still waiting for the attorney then to get back to us.
Next is report from Dave Ambrose, assessor on the two thousand seventeen grant list. Hope you got good news.
As you read, the net grant list increased by ten point seven million dollars, or point eight seven percent. On the revenue side, the increase in revenue would be approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, three six zero 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 zero, using the current mill rate. Evergreen Woods is responsible for the majority of the assessment growth. Recent permit activity, mostly for tenant improvements, opened the door for an interim revaluation of the property. We were able to use the recent sale of the property as a measuring stick. I talked to the reps from the property, Evergreen Woods, and I explained to them why there was such a large increase in, in the value. They agree with the value and decided not to appeal, which is, that's good news. We also overrode the value for our three utility companies. I adjusted the asset depreciation to reflect a much, much longer life. I expected calls, and I did receive three calls from the utilities. I explained to them why I thought there was a need for an override in the depreciation. They didn't agree or disagree on the phone. However, they did not appeal by the statutory deadline, so there, there is no appeal from, from these folks. With that being said, personal property decreased regardless of the increase in the, in the utility companies. Annual depreciation with a lack of substantial sales, or purchase, I'm sorry, a lack of substantial purchases was a major factor. The biggest account decrease was Cherry Hill. Cherry Hill took advantage of the state manufacturing exemption. If you remember, last year we increased their assessed value by two point five billion, based upon site inspections. Board of Vehicle is up by two point three million. We will not know if the DMV's issues or problems are resolved until our bills hit the streets. Using last year's grant list as an example, after we signed the grant list and the bills were mailed, we added one point four or five million dollars and removed two point eight million dollars via assessors corrections. The increases were due to ads from other towns and taxpayers either calling us or coming in to request tax bills. Exemptions increased due to the first assessment deferral to come online. Also, the increase is due to the purchase of new commercial trucks prior to ten one seventeen. The trucks will be taxable after five years. The BAA is meeting tonight and tomorrow. They have eleven appeals, all residential, so our liability for any, for any BAA decisions or Superior Court is very small. And I gave you a lot of information in your, in your packets, so if you have any questions, I would love to answer them.
The water company repair. My understanding, and I've been at this a long time, Joe's not here to help me, is things that were pre the certain date or in the pilot program.
Nineteen eighty.
Things that are new in town are taxable. Now, I know it's hard luck that the big old pipe is going to leak, and they had to put this thing in, but I, and I don't know what it is, but I've been told, and I can't believe it, but it might be, I've been told that they ran nine miles of plastic pipe around the, across Tilcon, around the, you know, through Northford and down this, this side of the hill to bypass the leak. So I just want to make sure, if it is taxable, that we should be able to tax it next year.
Does the water authority pull permits for the work? I don't think they do. So I wasn't aware of the number of linear sheet that was-
I don't know whether they pull permits or not, they probably don't.
They don't pull permits, but that, those conduits are taxable.
They should be, right? I mean, could anything new, anything after that pilot date-
Nineteen eighty, you're right, you're correct.
Is supposed to be taxable.
That's, that's absolutely correct.
So I would think-
It's only temporary fix-up. It's only a temporary situation.
What's on the ground?
They're going to replace the pipe that was there.
The plastic pipe was there during the construction process, temporarily to bypass water.
So how long does the nine miles of pipe stay there?
April.
Yeah.
Just April?
Yeah.
That's very careful.
What kind of piping is it?
Because there's serious value on that.
Oh yeah, you guys see the pumps up the lake and the generators, it's quite an operation.
Most of that value is in the installation of the, of the product.
So they're only borrowing to do this, bypass, then go away.
I'm doing the same thing with my house.
Well, there's a, there's a question there, whether, because the installation is also a taxable commodity.
Right. Now, the manufacturing exemption, is that a one-time exemption?
No, it runs forever.
Forever.
If it's eligible, it could last as long as you own the equipment.
But as long as you're manufacturing.
You're manufacturing product, and rock crushers are considered manufacturing equipment because they're manufacturing gravel.
Right, different side.
I called several other assessors and other PP gurus, and they agreed that, that this, this equipment, even though they're portable rock crushers, they are exempt, under the statute.
Now, the product or the inventory, if you're allowed to, that's not-
Inventory is exempt by statute.
That's right. I was just curious.
Yeah, it's tough. I mean, those things are worth half a million dollars a piece or, or more.
I don't want to get off my bypass with the pipe. You know, to me personally, I don't care that it's only going to be there till April. There is a value to it, if it is taxable, I mean, look at, look at, you know, I mean, I get it, with just my machinery, if I go to, and if I'm in another town on October one, you know, they want to contact you, or, or they want to tax us for our machinery, or New Haven, it's always in the paper, or New York City, a crane goes there for one day, they tax it. So I just want to make sure, because we do know that the, the, you know, the Water Authority and us have been at odds on, on the value of things and what we get for tax dollars. So I want to make sure that if it's there till April, you know, and maybe the attorney has to get involved, that we tax them for it if we're allowed to.
I think-
That's all I'm saying.
I think for heavy construction equipment, I think, I think the lawyers has to be there three months or more, closest to October first and on October first. For this type of, this type of equipment, if it's located here for three months or more during the year, it could be taxable.
Okay, so we don't want to-
I would love to put a report together for you, and if so, it is-
We don't want to let that get away.
I'm sorry?
We don't want to let that get away, if we can tax them for it.
I would love to put together a report for the council and get back to you ASAP.
Anything else? Thank you, Dave.
Dave, thank you, that was a good report.
Nice, nice report, David.
Yes, thank you.
Next, we're moving to new business discussion in action, discussion regarding the issuance of an RFP for pension investment advisor services.
This came about because the Pension Committee had a special meeting last week, the minutes are part of our, in our agenda packet here, but as we've reported throughout the last year, eighteen months, we have not, the Pension Committee has not been pleased with the performance on the pension fund. And just to clarify, this pension fund, we have somewhere around eleven, twelve million dollars, but it's the defined benefit plan, which is that pension fund. There are a number of employees that are in the defined contribution plan, which is not part of this at all, so this is employees prior to nineteen ninety-nine, Anthony said it, town employees, prior to nineteen ninety-nine. So, we've been in some funds, as we all know, last year, when, you know, your individual plans, you'll take more risk for, we've been more on the conservative side, on the town's side, because it's not our money. But when plans on a very conservative, conservative side were making ten to twelve percent, we made a quarter of a percent, based on the investments that we were in at the time. We started to do a little bit better in the first quarter, and it was up a little bit more than, I mean, we were probably in the seven percent range, but then we all know what happened at the beginning of February. And in the first two weeks of February, our pension account lost over a half a million dollars. When we've been told all along that the funds that we were in would weather any downturn in the market. So the Pension Committee is not pleased with our investment manager, and we voted unanimously to recommend that we go out for an RFP, so it is before the council tonight for a vote to approve the RFP, which will be put together, and then it'll be in our March, in our next meeting packet, the actual RFP that we can vote on, look at, and vote on, so that it can go out to bid.
Rose?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what, what we're paying this firm, or how that's set, that's set up?
The fees?
The fees.
And commissions, or what, I'm not exactly sure, Anthony. For, for the company that manages?
It's one point two five percent on a quarterly basis to charge.
It's one point two five percent on a quarterly basis, the charge comes out of the pension plan itself.
So one point two five percent of
The asset value and the proceeding, so let's say the March thirty-first value, in April, we could charge one point two five percent for each of the three plans, the police plan, the town plan and the fire plan.
That's per quarter?
Yes.
So we're losing money.
So I wonder.
So what's that, like a hu- a hundred and twenty thousand? Anthony, what, what's it, what's the dollar value? Is it like a hundred and twenty thousand?
I'd be lying about that, but I didn't even pay you.
I was just, you know, roughly just moving decimals to the left and
Hundred fifty-one thousand.
What's that?
Hundred fifty-one thousand and a half bucks.
Right, so it's, that's quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
Per quarter?
Per quarter. I'll get the right numbers, right?
Okay, that just seems awfully high.
Yeah, it's real.
Per, per quarter.
Yeah, that's more than we made.
Lot more than we made.
But I guess what I was getting at is, like, huh, or and maybe even way in, how to best write an RFP for something like this, you know, is there
There are other towns that are
Right.
Guilford is also, at this point, we, Anthony got notice that they're out looking for an investment manager, so they're doing an RFP and Anthony did give us a couple examples of some RFPs from other towns and the last time we did one, RFP from when we had gone out.
When was that?
Well, the RFP that the council referring to is we did an OPEB investment RFP in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, I think it was, for our OPEB assets. We haven't changed pension advisors since nineteen ninety-nine.
Since nineteen, we've had the same pension advisor since nineteen ninety-nine?
Yeah. Prior to ninety-nine, the
How have they performed?
Not good.
Not, it's quite well.
Well, I think it's just been the last couple of years.
Right, it's only been recently that we haven't been good performance. Prior to ninety-nine, the plan was all administered by CBT, then became Fleet Bank. They did the actuarial service, the investment service, the administrative services. In ninety-nine, we split it up into three pieces, we went to the actuary, went to Milliman. The investment piece went to Morgan Stanley and we used a place called Insurance Programmers out of Wallenford for the administrative pieces. That's the way it's been since ninety-nine.
And how did it perform in oh seven?
In oh eight, we lost about a third of the assets.
A third.
Well, oh eight, the market was in the toilet, so everybody
I remember that, but that's still a substantial, uh, loss
Right.
when you have an investment advisor who, who tells you that they're protecting your town.
Right.
I mean, it's not like you're in heavy growth.
Right. No, you're right, the, the asset allocation mix is something that's monitored by the pension committee. The town council actually set the asset allocation, last time they made changes about three or four years ago. That's monitored by the pension committee on a quarterly basis. And he recommends changes periodically and the strategy that Councilor, that Mayor's referring to was put in place probably about eighteen months ago, where we went to a conservative mode, he envisioned a market decline coming and
I saw that, but I didn't protect against it apparently.
That's a hundred percent correct.
Yeah. So you need a motion? I make a motion.
I feel emotional.
Um, sure.
Yeah, we need a motion for an RFP.
For an RFP, for a new, uh, for a new pension advisor, certainly.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I think I also may be contingent upon the review, like with the town manager, maybe, you know, interviewing the RFP.
Right, then it comes back to Yes, of course.
Yeah, the RFP's gonna come back in, in our next meeting.
Well, if I get seconded, I'm sure.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Sure.
That quickly or?
Yeah. I, I think we can, and you've seen, I think maybe their, their pension committee members have wanted, but I haven't seen any comments yet, they were given all of the same material of some recent RFPs to take a look at. Yeah, I think that's turn, we can turn that around, get that ready for the twentieth and also have attorneys' comments as well.
All right. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leo.
Yes.
Just got the counselors out there.
Yes.
Uh, next is discussion on lifting the hiring freeze for North Branford Police Department due to Officer Sheen's unexpected retirement.
So
Second.
Discussion.
Is this in any way in conflict with the other item that was just put on the agenda for an executive session?
No.
This is to
This is just to lift the hiring freeze.
So that we can replace him based on his resignation. He resigned as of
Well, if we're having an executive session, I'd certainly like to hear that before I vote on this.
But this is just to replace him, just nothing related.
He's not coming back.
Well, I understand that, but it, it's gonna inform, you know, the council, seems to me.
Well, the executive session is regarding pending litigation, which would have nothing to do with hiring a replacement for him. They're two, they're two separate issues.
It's kinda not related.
Well, I'm not sure, but they're not related.
I make motion to lift the hiring freeze for the North Branford Police Department to replace Officer Sheen, who has resigned.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Abstain.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leo.
Yes.
Counselor Zampa.
Yes.
Our next item is bid ward, approval of bid number twelve, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, portable toilets.
Interesting, there's only eight dollar difference between
Right. I know, number two is a, is a resident.
And they've also done, I, I can say that they've also done the festival for the last ten, twelve, maybe the longer years.
Which is separate from this.
Correct, but we have some corona type of service.
Have, have you used Global Site before?
I don't know, and I don't believe we have, I don't think they have either training, are you familiar with Global?
No, we never.
And is number four the one that you currently have? Or had last year? United Site Service, nor this? That's the one you had this past year, right, okay.
They checked the references on Global?
I did not, Michelle Rockwood said she did, I don't, I don't see
And so number, number two
I would take two.
Had, it says no bid bond and surety, does that have an effect on the bid? I mean, it's noted there, but what's the
Bid bond surety was called for in the specs, so technically
They did meet the specs.
They could be found deficient in the, in the spec. The actual bearing of the surety bond probably could be something that the spec could have dispensed with.
Didn't meet the specs.
It doesn't have material, I don't think it's gonna have an effect or impact on the, on this particular bid, but technically it's a deficiency.
Am I, am I just saying each bid bond was different to the fact that they, how they, they just came up with the wrong number?
Right. I, yeah, at, at this point, I, I don't see, in my opinion, I don't see any deficiency in one, bidder number one, to jump over bidder one at this point. I mean, I may be missing something in a very close, in dollar amount. Unless there, unless there's a miscalculation, I don't think the math is wrong. I had them double check, but I don't see any deficiency or any reason within the bidding process to step over one.
Is, is Global Site, I mean, they're based out of Seymour, Connecticut? Do, do we know if, do they have like a terminal or something or a building, is that like their office and they're gonna have trucks closer or? We don't know that. So the only reason I'm saying that is, so say we're at something like the Potato Festival and we have a, a windstorm blows all the toilets over. The guy from Ridgetop Lane in North Branford is a lot quicker to come clean them than having the guy from, have to get here from Seymour, so I'm just throwing that out there.
And the guy from
And believe me, I have to, you know, by, by, by the state building code, you know, I have, I, I have five or six of these all year long and every one of them was upside down last week. So we just stand them back up and then it's really funny when somebody goes in there, but, you know, can't do that as a town, you know? So, I mean, that, that's just, in my mind, that's something to think about. What's the response time become, you do have emergencies with, with portable toilets, it's, sorry to say.
Well, number two specifically has done the Potato Fest every year for that, you know, the, the weekend, so he, he delivers and maintains all of those and I don't think there's been complaints on the way he maintains those. The ones that are near the ball field and that are there for the eight months was, last year was absolutely horrible at, because you couldn't call number two to come and take care, they weren't his, he was servicing all of his on the field. The other ones, we couldn't get the supplier to come and service them.
Are there references to number one that were considered?
I
Was that part of the
Lauren said the purchasing agent checked some of those references.
That's what I was told.
Well, I mean, if they
So we don't know.
If you've got a low bid and, and the references have been checked and they're not deficient, then I don't see how we can ignore, ignore that, we went out for an RFP and we got one. How you doing?
Yeah, we got a bond, right? There's a bond on that, bid bond and surety bond.
Yeah, it was only number two that
Yep.
didn't have it.
But also in the spirit of economic development, we wanna do business with our people in town.
I can't hear you.
I said in the spirit
We may be, because of, I mean, he just opted not to do the bid bond, uh, bid Yeah, I mean, it was required, so
Can we just table this for the next meeting so that we can make sure everything is
We're talking about eight dollars, right?
Yeah, I just, I don't know that the, the timing, I defer to
When are you putting out your toilets?
You're doing the bid, Anthony, I don't know how you do that.
I understand, but
And, and he's deficient on the, uh, bond surety.
I think we should table that, let's get more information.
Is there a legal reason we, we couldn't jump to two?
For eight dollars?
My, my only concern, and if you wanna table it, I'll have an answer for you at your next meeting, is the fact that number two failed to meet the bid specs. And so the question is, I don't think the eight dollar differential is a meaningful difference for you to say, I can't go with two over one, there, there's, but if number one is gonna come at the town claiming that we violated public bid practices, it's gonna be because number two did not respond as the bid specs required. Uh, and so I would wanna look at the bid specs to, to verify what in fact was required before I opined on whether or not I can go with two.
All right, then let's, let's just table it, we have a motion to table it.
I move. Still under the discussion before we table it, so Lauren, is there, or Anthony, Michael, somebody? Is there, because that's a valid point about the other ones not being cleaned, is there a bond for them to do the work? So if we have a bond on the bid, is there a bond for the
Company has a performance bond now.
So I just gotta tell you, as Al sees it, that's completely backwards. Who cares what the bid is, whether there's a bond with it or not? We care that the toilets get cleaned every week or twice a week. And that's where the bond ought to be, because then you could call it. We had, last year, we had overflowing toilets and they didn't respond and because there wasn't a performance bond, you couldn't do anything about it. Except sit there with disgusting toilets.
We were at the Northford Park and they were bad a couple times.
So I think we should table it and we should look at that and maybe we should put it out again with a performance bond.
Well, who, who was the vendor for the non-performing toilets?
Number four.
Four.
Number four on the bid here, they were the highest. And that came off of a
See, that, they don't do their job and they charge the most.
Well, and that came off of a crap, you know, out of, off a state bid last year and and it wasn't, as we have seen now, going off state bid doesn't always
Was state bid higher than this last year?
Yeah.
I don't think it was bid last year.
Well, it wasn't bid, cause they went off a state bid, but they ended up, did you end up paying more than what we had paid the previous year? Going off the state bid.
Okay.
I mean, I, I guess, I guess what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see a thing from Michelle. You know, see, we, if this, if number one has three or four towns or communities or colleges or something that he supplied and he's getting rave reviews, then I, then, then, then I don't know how you don't go with him. But he's far away and, and if there's no performance bond, I don't know how you fix the problem once you're, once you're under contract with him.
Well, you've, you've got, you've got other, other people here too, you've got somebody from Bridgeport and if, if they had come in, I mean, they're close.
Yeah, they're all, they are.
If they, if they had come in, I mean, they're a legitimate bidder. But, you know, the town attorney made a, made a statement that I just don't understand, so I'd like clarity, that the amount of money separating them wasn't, wasn't so important and I, I don't, I'd like to know how much money is, become, becomes a deciding factor, cause I thought it was a dollar. I, I think I said it wasn't a meaningful difference to create an issue, in my opinion, with, because you are obligated to go with the lowest responsible bidder. Right. Uh, and in your view, if you have a eight dollar differential between two bidders, but there's one bidder who is more local, you may have the discretion to say that's a more responsible bidder because of how that bidder can respond to the town's needs. So you do, it's not that you are, your, your bid docs don't simply say you have to go with the lowest bidder. So if there's a fifty cent differential or if there's a fifty dollar differential, that by itself doesn't matter because you're allowed to go with the lowest responsible bidder. So I think you have to look at the word responsible and say, what does that mean? And if you feel that
Could be responsible.
That thirty, thirty minute or
That thirty, thirty minute, or if it's a eighteen mile separation between the vendor and the town, that, that is too far because of response time, then, or because of references that they don't clean their toilets regularly or things of that nature. Then you can disqualify them as not being a lowest responsible bidder, and then you move on to the next one. So I don't think, so my point was the dollar, independent of everything else, was not the sole determining factor.
So we could table this for two weeks and then get a little more information? Does that work?
Yeah.
Well, what would it take to, to reissue it?
Because.
Can you reissue it?
We'd have to do a whole new RFP.
Yes.
The only reason why I'm asking is, is Al's point about the, the performance.
Well, it could, it could be, as Al, as you just pointed out, and Al raised, it could be that the, the bond as, as written is insignificant to the bid process and the porta potties, and could potentially be waived, I think, for the town. I don't know, but that's something we'll go into finer detail, and we'll look at references as well. And I think you take a look at it at the next meeting. But I think from a timing issue, reissuing it, I think it's going to miss her window.
Because he's in for the first weekend in.
Yeah, I was just, I was just asking.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, otherwise we probably would if we had more time.
And then the only thing that I didn't get a warm and fuzzy feeling for, and I know she probably did it, but we asked if somebody checked the references, and the only thing I heard was that I heard somebody.
Yes, she did.
Checked the references.
She did.
Okay, so what I like to do, if I have to make this decision, have her put it in writing, I called so and so, they said this. I called so and so, they said this. Because if it isn't in writing, it didn't happen. And the last thing we want to have is lousy toilets and say, oh, well, Michelle Lockwood said that she checked it out, and it was great. Put it in writing for the next meeting.
All right, moving on. Item number D, bid award, bid number eleven, two thousand seventeen eighteen, purchase of vehicles for Public Works.
I think there was.
Yeah, there was.
Well, Counselor Candelaure moved. There was no second.
There wasn't a second?
Oh, no, to table, wait a minute. No, to table, I made a motion. There was not a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Move and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaure?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leo?
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
And next item is D, bid award, bid number eleven, two thousand seventeen eighteen, purchase of vehicles for Public Works.
Okay, this was sent to us today, and added to our agenda so that we could talk about it and approve it tonight. And I think the town manager made copies for everyone. So this bid is to replace three tru, or to buy three trucks, an F two fifty, an F three fifty, and an F five fifty. So a little bit went to Ford of Branford. So I make a motion to approve bid number eleven dash two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, purchase of vehicles for Public Works for Ford of Branford, for one F two fifty, one F three fifty, one F five fifty, with alternate number one for the five fifty with a stainless steel body. Total amount of the bid is one hundred and seventy one thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars.
Second. Discussion.
I'm sorry, Rose, what was?
Franny?
Oh, yeah.
So it's about five thousand dollars extra for the stainless steel body, and is that on the F five fifty? So is that, does the truck last and warrant spending the five thousand dollars?
Well, the shape that we're in right now is completely fixed. Let's put it this way, I got the, the bodies on these newer trucks that are four years old now are already rusted.
And they were regular steel?
They were regular steel. So all that is fifty one hundred bucks, I thought it was going to be a lot more than that, that's why I put it at all, and it doesn't work doing it, because unless we get on a ten year cycle, it will.
And that stainless is the, was it three sixteen? Three oh four? Yeah, I think the three sixteen is for salt. Okay.
And that's all stainless.
And that's sort of.
See, we were already replaced bodies on the other truck.
You might be able to move this stainless steel body. Does the stainless hold up to this stuff?
Estates.
Those standards that we bought in nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty eight, you guys bought the all stainless steel standard, still use it today.
Okay.
Franny, do we have like storage to protect these assets? In other words, put them inside?
Yeah, that new variety building, that's what we, which makes a huge difference.
Yeah. Right, right, yeah, good.
That was a big thing last week in the Public Works blog about storage and what they're doing.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Next item, citizen statements. Who seconded that? Al, did you, Al, you seconded it, right?
I seconded it.
George.
Okay.
George seconded it.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaure?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leo?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next item, D is.
Mayor, I have a question. The money that's not over from this bid.
You can't have it.
I'd like to use it to buy a mower for the ground, to get another zero turn.
So it was a hundred ninety five thousand budgeted?
Yeah.
So it's about twenty three thousand is left.
Yeah. And you need a mower and a paint striper, a mower that, it's not getting replaced, you're still using it if it's twelve years old now, so.
And what does that come to, twenty three thousand?
No. It's ten, and it's about twelve thousand for zero turn and another thirty five hundred for a spreader, which we have a lot of modelized sprayers, which are from nineteen ninety five, uh, ninety seven.
So roughly sixteen.
And we'd have to go to bid on the zero turn?
No, I could do both.
Because he's, his limit's higher for Public Works.
What type of, what type of zero turn, you know?
I use local people like.
Because if you.
Somebody want to make that motion, George? Want to make that?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion for a zero turn mower and a paint striper for Public Works.
And to use the funds.
And to use the remaining funds from, that was previously allocated for vehicles for that purpose.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Did the motions not exceed?
He's got to go off his quotes.
Okay.
He's got written quotes. Roll call.
Mayor Judy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelaure?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leo?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Our next item, citizen statements and petitions.
Mr. Peter Andrew, I just want to clarify something on pension moves. I was talking from the back. On twelve million dollars, one point five percent every quarter is five percent a year, six hundred thousand in fees.
I'll give real numbers first. That number might be wrong.
But it is one point.
No, I'll give real numbers first.
Are we paying one point two five a quarter?
No. I'll give real numbers.
So we're not paying one point two five a quarter? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next item is. Going to move into executive session. Including town attorney, town manager.
Town attorney?
Yeah.
Yep.
I make a motion to move into executive session to include the town manager and the town attorney.